Welcome to Leaders and Learners. My name is Tanya McKenzie and you can find me at the intersection of public relations and leadership. Join us as we talk to organizational leaders, elected officials, experts, authors, artists, and personalities, sharing their stories, talking about how they got to where they are and how they continue to learn and lead the way. So without further ado, let's get into it. Greetings, good people. Welcome to another session of Leaders and Learners, South Bay Edition, where we talk about all things South Bay. Today, we have an incredible conversation that is about to take place about something many of us are very familiar with, the South Bay Galleria. So I'm going to go ahead and kick it off to Paul, who's gonna then bring in our guest.
Okay, welcome, everybody. We've got a great show for you today. We're really happy to have our next guest. He's been a public servant for a long, long time. He served at the Redondo Beach Youth Commission, the Recreation and Parks Commission, and the Harbor Commission. He also served the public as the District Three Councilman for, well, he served for eight years. He got elected in 2015 and re-elected with overwhelming support in 2019. He's enjoyed support from his constituents to the day he left office. Let's welcome Christian Horvath.
Hey, everyone. How you doing?
Oh, you tell us how you're doing.
You know, work, family stuff, you know, just you got three kids that are teenagers. Life is busy. So everything's good.
That's good. Although your successor, we really favor. She does a great job. We do miss your presence on City Council.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your service. I do appreciate it.
I appreciate, I appreciate the sentiment. And, and yes, I, you know, watching from afar, I believe Paige is doing a great job. So.
Before we, before we get into the serious stuff, I do want to ask you, how are the kids doing? I too, Christian and I talk sometimes about what we're going through with our teenagers and their busy schedules, who then control our schedules. So what's going on with the kids and the family? How are they?
They are, they're good. You know, I mean, high school is, it's an interesting world, you know, one of them's now driving and getting ready to start applying for colleges. The other two are freshmen and so, you know, they're, they're just enjoying life. And of course, like every high school kid, hating school. So, you know, they want it to be summer all year round.
I love it. I love it. Well, Paul, thoughts?
Well, today, we're going to talk about the Galleria. We want to get it, Christian's, you know, long view on it. He's been involved in it since it's gone through its ups and downs. People should know the Galleria. It used to be this, this wonderful, wonderful revenue engine for the city. It was a prestigious place. In 1960, actually, John F. Kennedy came there to campaign for president when he was running against Nixon, because it was, you know, a big magnet in the South Bay. And during its peak, when there was Nordstrom's there, and I believe this was in the early 90s, it actually represented, the gallery itself represented 40% of all the sales tax revenue for the entire city. It was just a huge money, money machine for us. And it's, it's kind of fallen, well, obviously, it's fallen on hard times. Retail has changed over the years, but all the, we've had some really good opportunities to kind of revamp the place. And, and those have been derailed by anti-development folks in Redondo. And what we're going to talk about today is the cost of that. There is a definite cost to being an NIMBY. And we're starting to see that because our city revenues are really lacking. I may have been mistaken when I thought they were the number one source of, for city revenue, but their, their percentage of what they represent to the city has really dropped. And it's, it's starting to become a problem. And we've heard that a few times just in the last council meetings. We hear the phrase, "We can't afford it," which is a shame for each city. We should be rich. We live by the water. We should have plenty of revenues for the city. But that's, that's the way things go right now. We can change the future. But let's talk about the Galleria and, and get Christian's take on it. From the beginning, when he, when they first started, when QIC first started talking about maybe updating the Galleria.
Sure. Well, you know, I mean, this, the idea of the Galleria getting revitalized, it even started before I was on council. So Forest City was actually the, the long-term owner of that property for, I'm guessing, decades. And in around 2010 is when they started their, their process for, you know, what would a revitalized, you know, future Galleria look like. And, you know, it made sense because Del Amo was going through the same process at that time as well. You know, unfortunately, Forest City lost Nordstrom's. And to your point, Paul, it's really North Redondo is the sales tax driver, you know, and has been historically for the city. The Galleria does make up a giant component of that. And so, you know, the mix that they're able to put there is important in, in helping be that main driver for the Artesia Corridor. What was exciting for, you know, me in looking at that at a little, you know, both at a high level, but also holistically, was that a revitalized Galleria, you know, would have, in my opinion, a spillover effect, right? If you're making a 900 million, well, in $2019, a $900 million investment into the city and into that property, you know, there are going to be other people, other investors that would look at Artesia. And hopefully, as a part of our, the Artesia Aviation Corridor area plan, right? The idea was to help create an environment that would invite people to reinvest in their properties and/or do something and really have that spillover effect, you know, throughout the entire corridor, which would be beneficial. So, and it's no different than the way the waterfront was, was, you know, previous to that, right? You, you have areas of the city that, that are economic and drivers, or, or they are, you know, points of interest. So the waterfront clearly being one of those. And, you know, when you are thinking about that from a city staff perspective, from a city council perspective, you are trying to think about how do we ensure sustainability, financial sustainability, really. Not to say that, you know, green sustainability can't be a part of that conversation, but, but financial sustainability for a city, you know. Costs just continue to go up. So you have to match and find ways to create investment back into your city. So that way, then you can invest back into the services that a city provides to residents, you know. That could be parks, recreation, streets, roads, sidewalks, you know, anything that really a resident depends on for their quality of life is, is driven by the economic drivers that, that help a city stay afloat. And, and that's just part of the pie, right? Because we all know that the other parts are property taxes, TOT. There's a variety of, of revenue sources that come into a city, but sales tax is going to be a big component of that here in Redondo Beach. So I'm not sure if I fully answered your question, but I'm.
Yeah, you did. And then, and the idea of, of sales tax comes from anybody that shows up and buys something in the city or any kind of transaction that takes place in the city. It doesn't always come directly from residents where property taxes do, for the most part. TOT is almost completely from outside of the city. So there's just the way people think about that money is, you know, either it's money out of my pocket because I'm paying property taxes, or it's sales tax because somebody came from outside and bought a sweater, or, or TOT because somebody from outside. So that, those buckets of money are treated, or should be treated differently because of where they come from. Now, just getting back to Forest City, I don't know if, I can't remember if they had headwinds or they just got out of the deal to bring in QIC, who was the first iteration of trying to update the, the Galleria.
Yes, Forest City, to your point, they, they at a certain point, somewhere between 2010 and 2015, created a partnership with QIC, which was an Australian entity. And, and then, you know, started working on the project, you know, going forward as, as a group. I think ultimately, they, they didn't say it back then, ultimately, though, with the idea that Forest City would exit and QIC would become the principal, which is what ultimately happened.
Really quick, can you explain to the people who QIC is? Because for the regular resident, they don't know the difference between QIC or who is the partner of what, like, so talk ownership and management, because they, you know, they don't, they don't know.
Sure. So Forest City was based out of the Midwest and they, they owned malls. I think that was, that was one of their primary, their primary revenue sources and investments throughout the country. QIC, who they partnered with, I believe QIC stands for like Queensland, maybe Investment Corporation or something like that. And, and what they are is kind of like PERS here in California, the, the Public Employment Retirement System. They are a, a retirement system back in Australia, and I guess the Queensland, you know, state. And so they make investments, you know, what they're trying to do, of course, is grow the portfolio for the, for the people that are vested in that. And so they make investments and they have an entire real estate division. And they had made a decision to start investing in things here stateside and, you know, develop that partnership with Forest City. So, so that's how they came into the mix and, and eventually, you know, ended up taking it over and really looked at the Galleria as being a very long-term investment that would generate really good returns for their, the people in their system.
So the QIC is essentially the, the entity that struck the deal with, with the city of Redondo. They proposed the plans. They revamped the plans because of people wanting to change them and reduce the, the residential component. They really did everything they could to basically get approval of the project. But they were working with some existing zoning that, that happened actually before, well before them, back when the previous general plan was approved, which actually allowed residential on that. They never thought it would be built, but now here it is. QIC says, hey, we can put residential component into this and it will help the success of the project. That got tons of headwinds. It got headwinds from the Planning Commission and the, and the City Council. And that started this system, this, this, this cycle of delay after delay. And I believe, I mean, QIC just got tired of it and they saw their opportunities slipping away and also pandemics happened and things like that. So they jumped ship, as far as I know.
Yeah, they, they didn't jump ship prior to, prior to coming before the Planning Commission or in 2018, or the City Council in October 2018, and then again in January 2019. And I, and I don't know what led to somewhere in the pandemic timeframe, what led to them leaving and having El Cataran, you know, take over, or whether there was initially a partnership there. I'd have to, you know, go back and ask Stuart, who is really the, the main contact person at the Galleria, how that came about. But I think they were, they were truly, when they came and presented to the Planning Commission and the council, they were truly a vested interest. And, and that process took a really long time. I mean, to your point, people who are against any change, and, and development usually is the key word that they use, right? Development, redevelopment, revitalization. Those are the, the trigger words. But, you know, you, you had a, a major investor in the city, you know, that was saying, "We need to do something with our property." They came up with a plan. And, you know, they, they presented that plan. And, you know, I was, I went and reviewed my notes from the first public hearing, which happened in October, because it was appealed to the council from the Planning Commission. And, you know, they were projecting at that point in October of 2018 that, you know, once they had their approvals, it would be 15 months of completing design and, and then getting permits, and then 30 months of construction. So on that timetable, the Galleria would have been done by now. And, you know, that, that was their plan, you know. They would have had their investors lined up. They would have had their leases lined up, you know, during that design phase. You know, they would have gone into construction with, with everything that they needed. They also, you know, one of the funny things, I don't know if it's funny or sad, but in reviewing, you know, my notes from, from that appeal, one of the, the, the appeal was, was very weak. And the appellant would say, well, he just didn't have enough time to put it together. And so, you know, they just recycled the waterfront appeal. But, you know, in reviewing the notes, a lot of our experts on SEQA and whatnot, you know, were, were very clear in pointing out that none of the, none of the appellant's arguments really spoke to, hey, this, this has a, a problem, you know, in terms of SEQA or traffic. Like, there were, there was things they just didn't bring up within the appellant process.
Who was doing the appeal, if you don't mind me asking? So when you keep talking about someone that would appeal, who was the someone or the group that would appeal? And what were they appealing?
I think there's a group in town and then they just find different people to help them. In this case, it's a current Planning Commissioner, Doug Boswell, who, who appealed the project. But, but there was actually, there was four appeals on the project. So one came from Unite Here. One came from the city of Lawndale. I forget who the, the third group was, but it was, you know, some type of outside fringe group, you know, like special interest, and then, and then Mr. Boswell. The Lawndale appeal got dropped because the Galleria decided that they would like settle with them by, you know, investing $2 million into, into street and light, you know, intersection type improvements that affected Lawndale.
So some infrastructure stuff.
Yeah, exactly. You know, and Lawndale is known for, you know, kind of doing that. Unite Here backed off because, because part of the component of the gallery at that time was to have a hotel. And Unite Here advocates on behalf of hotel workers, you know, throughout, not only Southern California, but elsewhere. And, and so they were able to get a card check, you know, basically a guarantee that the, it would be a union hotel that they would work with. And that, and that's fine. That, that's, that is a typical negotiation tactic. And then with the other one dropped off, I don't remember. So we were left with Mr. Boswell's. And, you know, it, they were, they were ready to go. You know, I think what, what was super frustrating was we, we, those of us who had spent time really getting to understand the project as it went through its various iterations over a three and a half, four-year period, or I guess three and a half year period that I was in office. You know, we were fighting for different things, you know, we were asking for different things. And, and many of the things that I was, you know, talking with them about are the same concerns that some of my colleagues who are of a different persuasion or philosophy, you know, might have had. Regardless, we all had to come into that, that hearing. It's a de novo hearing. So it's like you're starting from scratch. And you have to come in with a completely open mind and be willing to listen and hear, you know, everybody's story. So it's, it's good to like go back and review the notes because, you know, you can see where, where everybody was coming from. And, and I don't know, you know, I think we could have easily made the same, the decisions that I, by my notes, was ready to talk about and make that night, had we closed the public hearing, you know, are similar things that already showed up in the, the January hearing. My colleagues, interestingly enough, you know, some of them had never even visited, they'd never met with the gallery owners or, you know, people. They, they had never even, some, one had never even been to the Galleria up until like a week before, or, or To The Point or Manhattan Village, you know, like, it was, it was super interesting to review the notes. So, you know, you've got to put the time and the effort in to, to understand the complexities of a project. There was a lot of talk about, they had the project from a financing perspective broken into like somewhere between 39 and 50 parcels. But those parcels are not, you know, like the actual full, sometimes it's like a stairwell or. And, and all of that was done to help them with their financing. And clearly, it was made a big deal by, by some people. And by the time we got to the January continued hearing, they had cut back their parcels to try to appease that issue, even though it was really not an issue. So I guess my broader point here, and I apologize for, for rambling a little bit, is that delays, you know, unnecessary delays, there's always going to be delays. And I think there's always things that, whether you're an elected official or you're a staff member, you know, you want to make the best project as possible, right? And you want to take into consideration the concerns of residents, quality of life concerns, you know, all the things that we hear and talk about. But at the end of the day, to Paul's point, it was zoned a certain way. And so the property owner is creating a project based on what is allowable, right? If they want to do something different, they would have to go to a vote of the people based on, you know, our Redondo Beach Charter. But they, they were staying within the mix. They were talking with the school district. They were talking with everybody. They were trying to create a project that one would work for them as, as a, you know, property owner and a major investor in the city, but also work for the community. And that takes time. And if you create unnecessary delays in that process, you know, then we get to the point where, you know, which I think Paul was getting at, where now it's not as easy to get, you know, into your, you know, get the financing that you need, get the, the leasing arrangements that you need. And then, of course, we got hit with COVID not too long after that. So, you know, there's, it's a, it's, it's like, you know, taking a match to a bunch of tinder sticks and then watching it go up and.
Yeah. And then, and just to let people know, there, there's a history of this type of activity, especially in Redondo. People make these roadblocks that are basically lies, or they're just fabricated. There's no substantial, you know, law against what people are doing. We saw this at the Legato project. They checked every box. They followed every code. They did everything right. And they still got roadblock after roadblock. And that's the whole point of it, is just to delay it and see if you can muck it up.
I wouldn't.
But when it, when it does come down to it, they, they, they always fold. I mean, Legato just won flat out. We just recently saw a very similar thing in Manhattan Beach with a large residential development in El Porto, where there was, you know, the, all these SEQA challenges. And then it came home, hey, you're in court and you need to prove your case. And it, it just collapses, just collapses like a house of cards. But that, those delays, you know, they may not hurt what's going on in Manhattan. We're not sure yet. Legato's moving forward. It's going to be a great project. But this is a really bad situation that North Redondo got itself into because of these delays. Because now we're talking like, yeah, they can't get the tendencies, the tendency up in the, in the facility, in, in the Galleria to actually get financing. No one's going to give them money. And, and the people that they were looking for, for money are changing. It's no longer banks. It's equity partners. And it's, it's just constantly seems to be, you know, these bumps in the road that they're having. All the while, our Galleria is just turning into a crime magnet and it's not in very good shape. So there's just.
I've talked to, real quick, let me ask you this. I've talked to other mayors in Southern California. And we talk about projects, big projects that have been able to happen in their cities. And so I asked them, like, what is your thoughts on why things aren't happening in Redondo Beach? And they were all clear to me, like, builders don't trust them. Builders and those that can make projects happen do not trust Redondo Beach leadership. They don't come to them with big projects because they don't trust that back then Bill Brand as the mayor, but the mayor or the leadership of Redondo Beach will get it done. And he was, they were saying that when they would come to them with project ideas, they came to them knowing, if we agree on this project, then we can make it happen. I can galvanize the support from my city council to make this happen. That's not something that is doable in Redondo Beach. Do you agree, either one of you, Paul, Christian, do you agree with that statement that other Southern California city leaders have, have said?
Well, yes, there's absolutely truth in it. And I, I spoke one time some years ago with probably one of the largest developers here in the South Bay, you know. And, and it was a frank conversation where I was asking him to consider, you know, making some investments into Artesia Boulevard. And, you know, he kindly scoffed at me. And, and it was, it's, it's for that reason, because the, the time, it's painful for somebody to go through a, a process in good faith, you know, and try to do something. And, and actually, you know, to me, Paul, Legato was not the good example. What's a good example is that Catalina project, where the old, you know, Catalina Coffee was, you know, it was primarily, it was like residential with some commercial upfront. And Jason, the, the architect and, and, you know, developer, if you will, is a local guy, lives in town and is really trying to do projects all in, you know, the beach cities and South Bay. And, and I mean, he really worked so hard to make everyone happy, like to do everything, not only by the book, by what was allowable, but like to really meet, you know, especially the people who don't like projects right where they were. And, and I mean, it was super frustrating, you know, this is a perfect example. Also, you know, an appeal to the council from the Planning Commission, all these, you know, all these delays. Came to the council, we, that meet, that was the longest meeting I've ever been in. We ended at 4:30 in the morning. It took an hour for the denial of the project for that motion to be made because they were like just pulling things out of, out of the air to deny it. But here, here's the thing, he could have probably sued the city. He didn't. Because he was like, you know what, I really want to, I want to make this work. I want to find a way to do this, you know, you know, collaboratively. They, he came back, he got approvals at some point from the city. I think this is now after I've, I've already left council. And he, he lost his financing. He, done. So that project's not happening. He has to sell that, that property to somebody else. And, and, you know, now granted, it's entitled, you know, but like the, these are just the byproducts of, of bad governance and really taking your own personal philosophies a little bit too far, in my opinion.
Well, I'll just come out and say it's, it's an NIMBYism to the point of being self-destructive. And where do we end up? I lived, I lived by that neighborhood where that project was proposed. It's been an empty storefront and a coffee shop and a dry cleaner for years now. And this is what we get. We just get rundown buildings. We don't get any improvement. You know, they, they stopped the project and they did it on completely false pretenses. But what, what's the community end up actually getting? Nothing. We end up getting rundown, you know, Catalina Corridor, which could be fabulous. It could be a revenue generator. We could have new neighbors. But no, what we get is squalor. And it's really starting to add up in the city. And I know, I know, that's a great example because I pitched that to other folks that I know that have tons of money to develop residential. And they just said, no way, I'm not going into Redondo. I just, they just refused. They, they have, they're smart with their money. They're going to go where they can do what they want. And, and I've heard even Mayor Light says he's, we need office. We want to get a major like campus here by a Google or an Apple and stuff like that. And that's just poppycock. Because Google or an Apple wants, basically, you know, they want to control their, their destiny. If they're going to put billions of dollars into a campus, they're going to say, we don't want to hear no, you know, they don't. So it's, they're just never going to come here because the reputation, the reputation will be hard to break.
Yeah, there's only two places maybe where that could happen. One is at the Galleria. And, you know, I mean, Laura, Laura MD and I, former councilwoman, you know, were brown acted on the Galleria for, for many years. And, you know, we were discussing the idea of a commercial, you know, shared workspace, that kind of stuff with them. But I, I don't know, you know, the, could you get a campus there? Probably not, because that, that really is a true mixed-use thing. But, you know, the AES site is probably the only site where you could get some type of campus like that. But here's the thing, major corporate campuses don't just want a campus, right? They want, they, they, they want residential nearby for their employees. They want amenities. And you, you don't have that in the waterfront right now to support that, let alone, you know, the possibility of, you know, anything happening at the AES site just because of the current litigation and, and issues. And, and you could do all that with a park, you know. But, but you're, you're right. There's a certain level of stagnation. And, and this is something that frustrates me, you know, because I was, when I was on council, I, I really wanted to just get things done. And, and I did. I got a lot of things done, you know, from a policy perspective, but, you know, we didn't get anything done that was going to have like these long-term effects, you know, in creating a sustainable revenue source for the city to then allow the city to be able to provide all those other things that residents want. And so you're right, the stagnation. And so you're right, the stagnation is a byproduct of fear being used over and over again to frighten people into, you know, the boogeyman of traffic, which already sucks and and always will suck. You know, there's just, you know, I I remember a District Five resident who was very much into environmentalism and traffic, sent me an article from the nineteen fifty's talking about how bad traffic was in Southern California, you know. So like, it's always a problem, you know, it's always going to be a problem. But but, you know, we don't have anything. And all the things that we've tried to do, whether it be the waterfront or the Galleria or whatnot, you know, the delays end up creating no revenues.
Some nothingness. Mary?
I want to ask the three of you, because that's your that's your turf. And the practical, you know, the drawbacks of it of not having a vibrant mall. I mean, El Segundo has the point, which is a great place. And then Manhattan's revamped their mall. And the community around it have these areas where they can go and they can enjoy them. They can, they're useful. They have a certain amount of use. Now, with the the Galleria being as it is now, how is that affecting your life, you know, on on just the day to day?
Well, I'll tell you this, my kids don't go to the Galleria.
Yeah.
My kids go to Del Amo. And it's not because we live five minutes closer to Del Amo now. It's because there's nothing at the Gala, you know, nobody's going to the Galleria. And I and I don't say that because I'm I'm not trying to hurt, you know, Stuart and and his project, right? The reality is that he recognizes that too. And and this is why they want to just, you know, keep their project moving and and get something to happen. So yeah, there's there's nothing there for young people or, and and listen, I I just want to say this, you know, to me, and this is something I talked with Stuart and John Alderson before him and and, you know, the previous, like, I was really trying to get a community services entity to be one of their major vendors at the site. And I I still can't talk about it, because if, hopefully, they're still working on this, you know, that entity would be great for families and kids and and whatnot. And it's something that would benefit North Redondo and Lawndale and North Torrance and Manhattan and Hermosa, you know. You have to bring the people in, and they need to be brought in with a variety of different things. Whether it's not just shopping and dining and, you know, the whole experience, you know. Sometimes, you know, kids clearly don't have money to spend, you know, they just want to go walk around someplace cool. So, so, yeah, that's how it's affecting me personally, aside from the fact that it's just, it's hard as somebody who wanted to get a lot of things done that would have a major impact on our community in a positive way, not seeing them happen.
So, Christian, so, okay. Just in summary, make a very, very short. This has not been because of COVID that the Galleria is not built. This has been ongoing for many, many years. The nimbyism is essentially what has stopped the Galleria from being able to get its financing. Then COVID comes and now it is now now it is stopped as a result of that. But really, it was ongoing prior to that. So in the last few, I would say, last month, there have been some community meetings. We had a District Three slash Four combined meeting where we met with the Galleria people and even before that, and some other, you know, N R B B A had a meeting and things like this. And what we're learning now is that in order to get the financing to move forward with doing something at the Galleria, they're going to have to add additional housing units. And it's not going to be homes that people can buy. It's actually going to end up being apartment units. And so, you know, this brings me back again to when the palace shelters were on issue. And event, you know, Lone Steen, Narenheim and Obadiah all voted to put the palace shelters in District Four because the people in South Redondo through their community meetings and going to the council and all this other stuff really made it clear, we don't want it in South Redondo. So of course, put it in District Four. We have it. It's benefited the city. It's a great thing, et cetera, et cetera. But we did take that responsibility on in our district. Now, the same district is being asked to now take on an additional three hundred and fifty units. That brings us to six hundred and fifty units at that Galleria site. Okay, so once it falls upon, it it's backfired, you know, Doug Doug Boswell or whoever, Ray Else along with him, or if it was just him, came and caused some of this blockage prior to COVID. And and now here we are in two thousand twenty four. Now we're going to have to have more. I mean, what what should District Four ask for in return? I mean, we are already being inundated with everything that everyone else doesn't want. What are your thoughts around that? I mean, it it all falls upon this one district. Oops, sorry. Like, I'm so mad and felt that. So so what do we do about this? Like, what what is what is going on? What do we ask for? What is what is the benefit to us? And why should we even do it?
Okay, let me try to hit on, because you you said a lot there. So, one, I think the process for development takes a long time. Going back to what I said a little bit earlier, you know, if if that project had, say, been approved in October of twenty eighteen, would have they been further along in the process before COVID hit and and locked in their financing, locked in their, you know, the people who wanted to lease? Absolutely. You know, would have they been in construction during COVID? Yes. And and would you have a new gallery and now? Probably. But delays, you know, and and listen, there are a lot of delays that are created by the desire to stop projects, right, or to to make them smaller or limited or whatever. But but it just doing projects in general, you know, there's always delays internally that that happen. So so COVID does play a factor in this, right? Because that changed. I think, you know, so to to the point again, if they had met their deadlines and their timelines as they were predicting, could have they avoided some of the COVID issues? Absolutely. But then COVID does hit and it does create, clearly, a ton of issues for them, just even just in operating, you know, a lot of businesses closed down during COVID, right? They weren't open. You know, it it has giant implications, but it also then started to have implications on on their ability to find investors, you know, who wanted to do a mall or or stay in that type of project. It it had issues on their ability to to create long term leases or to find new leases. It's 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 a really complicated process. And, you know, when we were negotiating the waterfront project, you know, I really got to gain a an in depth understanding into how how much goes on behind the scenes that we're not aware of. With that said, those we're in a different landscape now, right? And now financing is challenged by higher interest rates, you know. So it's same kind of thing that a a city would would have right now. Anybody who wants to borrow money, you know, you're kind of hesitant to do it because your interest rates are are that much higher. Okay. And you talked about the palace shelters. And you you have to lump me in there because I, you know, Mike Webb and I were the two drivers behind bringing palace shelters to to the city of Redondo Beach. And I'm grateful that my colleagues voted on it, but and supported it. But you're right in saying that there was initially, there was a discussion that we would do six months here and six months in South Redondo. We talked about maybe even moving it from district to district. You know, and and that was meant to to at least say, hey, we don't have to keep it in one place. We can try this, you know, and it was it was a trial project at that point. But you're right, they they did re neg on on the six months here, six months there type of discussion, which was not shocking. And so but good example of something that a lot of people were against not creating any problems. So you're right, District Four took it on. And and I'm super grateful for the residents of District Four and and anybody who has supported the process. And I'm really grateful that Paige and other people are expanding it now. So the, you know, the the Palace Shelter project is growing, you know, more than doubling its size. And to your point earlier, Paul, that is something, you know, all the work that I did in homelessness over the past eight years, something I'm super proud of. So now, let's get to your residential component.
Be proud of that. And I do want to make sure we do touch on that really quickly, that the palace shelters have benefited all over Redondo Beach tremendously. And we are very proud of of how it's done and that it is expanding. So.
Yeah, and they're changing, they're changing people's lives on a daily basis. So, okay, now the the residential units, that was the next part of your thing, you know, okay, so so you're right, to Paul made the point earlier, this was zoned a long time ago. And and they could have in that first iteration of the project that came before the Planning Commission and Council, they could have asked to do six hundred and fifty units or whatever is allowable, or was currently allowable at that time. They did not, because they were trying to work with the community. They were working with the school district. They came up, you know, they brought it down to, I think, they brought it down to just below three hundred and then did a density bonus to accommodate affordable housing, which was something that Laura and I had really pushed for, you know, workforce housing. I was pushing for permanent supportive housing or bridge housing, you know, but ultimately, you know, the affordable component was something that they they recognized was a good thing. And, you know, were willing to to say that they would even hold that for Air Force members or or school, school teachers or, you know, public safety employees, whatnot. So now, because the landscape has changed as a result of the delays, listen, residential is always, this is another thing I learned while I was on council, especially as it related to working on the subcommittee for the AES site. Investors, developers, people who are doing projects of, you know, this scope and size will see a higher return on investment by having a certain portion of the project be residential. So if they're struggling with the financing and and whatnot, then yes, they're they're going, that's why they're going to come back to the Planning Commission and say, we need to do these additional units. You know, I mean, it it's just, it's just where they're at. And it's 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 what they have to do at this point, and it's already zoned. But I will, to I think a point you were making underlying there, you know, my colleagues, you know, in a three two vote for the the current housing element, you know, they they there's way, that area is zoned now for way more than just six hundred. So yes, North Redondo, District Four and District Five have the potential to have thousands of units added, you know, in coming years. Now, that's not to say that they will be put there, but it is part of a planning process. So at some point, somebody will. Paul made the point. It was zoned this way a long time ago. Well, all right, this is going to impact people. If not today, it'll impact people later. So, yes, I I what can you do? I think your final question was, well, what can you do? Well, you know, I think the only thing you can do is elect people who are actually going to listen and try to work with everybody, you know. You can't make everybody happy as an elected official, but you have to do what is in the best interest of the city. And, you know, in that housing element discussion, there were over five hundred comments from North Redondo residents asking for an equal distribution of those RIN numbers, which are, you know, these kind of arbitrary numbers from the Southern California Association of Governments that determine, you know, how are you going to fit that within your city zoning? Or how are you going to change your city zoning to to allow for that? That, that's a big deal. And that's something people need to think about, you know, on a go forward basis, you know. Who, why are certain decisions being made? And who are you going to vote for to to really, and this is, this is just my personal philosophy, to really take a thoughtful approach to it. Will you make everybody happy? No. But, you know, is there a way to do it that that doesn't just necessarily piss off, you know, everybody in one specific area? And listen, you know, I know your current councilman, Miriam, you know, he said, well, you know, he he took the bait on the, well, you know, all the traffic will be in the north and it won't be passing through the city because it'll just be, you know, going out to the four oh five or whatever. Traffic is traffic. Doesn't matter where it is, you know, I I commute every day, you know, south, and then I have to come home, you know, and sometimes or I got to drive up to El Segundo to pick the kids up from school or whatnot. Like, it takes me forty five minutes to go from work to, you know, the the Air Force Base area. It it just is what it is. But I'm telling, it hasn't been, it's been that way always, you know, like, depending on the time of day, where you're going, like, this is just what it is. Do I think, you know, traffic is the the giant boogeyman that should be used all the time? No. If people really want to change traffic, then we would change the infrastructure of our streets and we will allow people to be able to use more bikes and get around easily in a safe manner. And, you know, we would put more public transportation in and you know, we would do things that people also don't want to see. So you know, it's all about decisions. It's all about thoughtfulness and and who is there to help make hard decisions and try to meet people somewhere in the in the middle, if at all possible.
Well, you nail on the head when you said it depends on who you vote. Your vote is so important. The things that have happened these last four years is because of the people that are have been voted in. And we have an opportunity to change that. And that is, you know, I'm very happy that, you know, Paige was elected to replace you, Christian. I think she's a very balanced person, and she is able to have those hard conversations to say, this is what's best for the city. And I think we need to see more of that versus this is what's best for me and my neighborhood and what I want to see. It's not about you. It's not about your vision. It's not about your nimbyism. It's actually is ultimately what is best for everyone and all of our neighbors. So I do believe you hit the nail on the head with that, Christian. Thank you.
Hey, Christian, let me ask you really quick, and I could be wrong. But I have not experienced a grand opening ribbon cutting from the city in the ten plus years that I have lived here. I don't, I think the Friendship Garden might have been it, but that's still not by the city, or that's a city partnership, correct?
Uh, the Friendship Foundation?
Yeah, Friendship Foundation.
Yeah, that, well, that that's not a city project. That's a a school district and the Friendship Foundation, you know.
So the answer is no, no, nothing.
That was, that was the first that was the first project ribbon cutting I went to in eight years. Yeah.
Yeah. Ribbon cuttings bring a lot of energy to cities. And to not really be able to experience that, especially in our community, I I don't think it's good. So, you know, just want to say to me, Bill Brand's legacy is a legacy of nothingness and almost anti youth. And I know that we're having a really big problem with our young people here in this city. I even heard that money has been diverted away from parks and wrecks to other areas of the city now. I think a mall or a shopping area or whatever, a living social district that has opportunities for young people like we spoke about would be quite beneficial. But here we are, yet adding nothing new to the business community or quality of life in Redondo Beach. And now our mall seems to be attraction for crime and just ridiculousness, which is unfortunate because there has been some great business owners there. All that being said, I want to know what you feel is Bill Brand's legacy in Redondo Beach. A lot of people are like, oh, he loved Redondo. He loved it. Yes, he loved it like it was. He did not want it to change one bit. Not the demographic, not any people, that's just as a resident, what it felt like. For you, working with him, I want to know what you feel like the legacy was.
Well, you know, I I think it's fair to say that, you know, there is a legacy of of nothing if you want to think about like creating and building things. You know, that there's a legacy of of stopping things and, you know, creating a what I would say is a not pleasant environment, you know, for residents or people who were not necessarily within his tight circle. And, you know, which I I also think is really unfortunate because, you know, when I had run for office, you know, there was clearly I had met people who didn't have kind things to say about him as a council member at that time. But I really came into my position then saying, well, I I feel like I could work with anybody. And, you know, sometimes I feel like people have valid concerns and and maybe they're not being heard because of the way they're trying to communicate. And so I I really tried hard to 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 work with him for for a while. And and actually, there are many things that we accomplished or were able to get moving, even like the general plan process, you know, something that he really wanted to see redone. And he was unable to get that done. And he was unable to get that done with the previous council and and, you know, I I reminded him frequently that Laura and I getting on council actually helped. To get a lot of things moving that that he was concerned about, uh, because we we actually agreed, you know. But, uh, we were still considered an enemy, you know, uh, and and so that's unfortunate, I and I wish that, uh, that it didn't. Uh, play out that way or that it didn't have to be that way and I wish it wasn't, uh, something that kind of existed in perpetuity because of. You know, the individuals, uh, that are a part of that that tight circle. You know, I clearly, you know, people who, uh, were very close with him will, uh, will say that his legacy was. You know, uh, specific to like the AES site or whatnot, um, and getting it to shut down. But but I, I mean, that is, you know. That is. Something that he wanted to see, uh, happen and, you know, everybody worked, you know, everybody was actually in agreement on that. So, uh. But that happened because, you know, the state water board in two thousand ten, you know, made a decision that they would. Have to stop using the ones through cooling process and then we as a council made other decisions and changes. That would ensure that it really made sense for them just to sell the property. So, yeah, I I don't know that I'm, you know, I I was clearly not not close with, uh, Bill. And, uh. But I think there is much to be done in the city that did not get accomplished. Um, and I am hopeful that, you know, people will, uh, put themselves out there. And that maybe the ridiculous rhetoric, you know, about anybody who is not a part of that group, you know, being, uh, in support of overdevelopment or whatnot will. Will start to, uh, get old because, you know, I think there's a lot of people out there who want to participate and who have good ideas. But they are afraid to get involved, uh, because the tenor and the attacks have. Uh, only gotten worse in the past twenty years, um, you know, coming from that one group. And it's completely unnecessary and it really limits the ability for not only things to get done, but for people to participate and. Uh, the only way, in my opinion, for. Uh, not not just government, but for, you know, community to thrive is to have people even of different persuasions or thoughts or whatnot. And you guys as, uh, GPAC members can probably talk to that to find a way to collaborate and compromise. And and compromise, I think, is probably the biggest thing, you know, compromise is not a dirty word, but there are. Some people who look at it as it's not a win unless they get everything they want, well, and that that's not true. Um, you know, we have to find a middle ground, uh, whether it's here locally or statewide or nationally. And, um, when people are entrenched on one side or the other, uh, that is where the stagnation happens. Uh, that is where the rhetoric gets, uh, to disgusting levels and and then. The people who end up suffering are the residents, the residents of the locality, the state, the, you know, the the country, so. I I hope, uh, and would do everything I can, you know, in my future years. To ensure that we kind of move beyond that and actually get stuff done.
This is for Paul and Christian, is there a possibility that we don't get a new mall project?
I would not rule it out, um, I mean, QIC left and so. Uh, the, they may not get their financing, you just never know, the, like I said, they haven't gotten it yet. And they they need to increase the tenant, uh, the tenants count there, it used to be, I think, a thirty five percent threshold, now I think it's a fifty percent. Threshold for them, for somebody to risk the money on the project, so who knows if it's, you know, and we hope that it is, that's the thing I want to end in a kind of a hopeful note that. The project can happen, it can move forward, it needs support from the community, needs support from the planning commission. And and just basically clear the, you you know, clear what they wanted to do for years, it's not like they're trying to add to this thing. It's, they've, they were zoned for this, let them do what they gotta do. And, you know, there may be people in the city that think they're, you know, we're being shoved into a corner by saying, well, either you add more residential. Or we're gonna just leave, they're in the same position, they've invested all this time and money. They've got to come up with some way to make this work and that's the choice they also have, so they're not trying to pull one over on us. Uh, it's just the reality of 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 the situation. Um, yeah, believe me, I want new stuff, I like new things and in a in a place that we can go. I mean, if people look at the plan and they see it, it's actually very different than what malls are. Um, so it it would be a great opportunity if we had something like that, but I I I wouldn't bet on, it it's a coin toss, I would say it best.
Christian?
I think he's.
Them to succeed, uh, sorry, can you hear me or?
Yeah.
Uh, I I want them to succeed, I believe, uh, Stuart, you know, who is really the main driver over there. And has gone through multiple iterations, you know, wants it to succeed and and is really working his ass off to make that happen. What I I don't want to see is people looking at this, you know, they are in in this tight spot now, right? Where, um, they are asking for additional housing. That clearly was not the original project, right? Times have changed, things have changed, they are in a situation where that is what they need to get the ball over the goal line. If, uh, if our city, if our planning commission, if our council does not get behind that and looks at this as like another bite at the apple. To redesign things or try to, you know. You know, put their own ideas into stuff like, uh, then then we're, you know, we're going down that pathway of. Creating, again, unnecessary delays, I mean, I granted, everything is changing, it's it's fairly fluid, but. I'm hoping that we will figure out a way to get them over that goal line, you know, uh. Uh, and and see something happen and and by the way, we're not going to see it happen for a while, there's still, you know, if we go back to that original, right? There, there's gonna be a a more design and then permitting and then construction, right? So this is not so happening, you know, if we're lucky, maybe this will happen by the time the twenty twenty eight Olympics are here. I I I I don't know, um.
And I believe Stuart did say like the the additional residential component is ten years down the line. You know, they've they've got plans to get initially what they wanted to get off the grounds, but they just need to know that this is coming. And they can get their financing and again, it's not just a bank loan anymore, it's people, they they have to give up equity now in the project to get financing. And I'm sure that wasn't in the original business plan.
I I don't think it was and, yeah, it's, uh, it's just a byproduct of where things that have happened.
Oh, well, we want to thank you, uh, definitely for taking the time to show up as you always have for us. Um, for continuing to be a source of. Information that we can process in a way that hopefully allows for those of us that are out there that want to, to be active. Um, in this civic process because it's your city, so you should probably speak up. If there's something that you heard that you want answers to or you want to see action happen, I mean, at this point. What do we have to lose? What do we have to lose? So thank you so much for being here and until next time, guys, thank you viewers and the subscribers. Um, and we look forward to your comments because we always get great comments after, uh, make sure that I share them with all you guys. But for the most part, our community loves getting digestible pieces of information and if there's something that you want to know specifically, let us know and we'll get them on. Christian, thank you so much.
Thank you, Christian.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
You guys, take it easy.
Hey, thanks for showing up to the podcast where we all know that the best leaders are lifetime learners, when you get a sec, take a moment, leave a comment. What'd you think about today's episode and share it with someone that you know could use the gems that were dropped today? Follow and subscribe, you don't want to miss who's coming up next, you never know who could show up here and what they could say. For your professional needs, marketing, PR, communications or leadership, make sure you follow us on all social media platforms. At Sand and Shores or hit us up at sandandshores.com, again, thanks so much for showing up, we appreciate you and we'll see you soon.